Yeah, I was in the Dallas Airport about four hours ago.
So Brandy, are you comfortable where it gets you seated?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, we're all like a bunch of bats. Once we get in our queue, we don't leave.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I'm.
And we didn't want to pair y'all up because we didn't look like real bulk, though.
Like girl power?
Yeah, real power, but we're not like, we're not even a woman. Yeah, we're not the little rascals.
So has there ever been two women on board?
I think so. I'm not sure. My dad's historic, he can tell me why I had depression about three years ago.
Well, maybe it's seven o'clock, so if everyone will please stand, we'll begin with a word of prayer, and we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance. So I'm being coupled, so lead us into prayer.
First prayer. Our most gracious heavens, Father, we thank you for yet another beautiful day. Father, we thank you for this warm building we're able to meet in tonight. Ask that you be with everyone here tonight, Father, and that we may conduct this meeting in a manner that is pleasing to you. Father, please be with all those that are sick and need comfort right now, Father. Just pray that you cast your head upon them. Be with all the student body and faculty this next week as they enjoy their holiday break. Father, be with them as they travel. We're so thankful for the opportunity to fellowship with loved ones and friends and family. Most of all, Father, we're thankful for the saving grace of your son. Father, we thank you for his love, and we thank you for loving us, and just forgive us for what we fail you. Pray all this your most holy divine name.
I'm Miss Miller's first grade class. Today, we're going to be singing the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready to give a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that will begin tonight by having Mr. Kildare call the road.
Shane Connor, here. Being couples, here. Jeff Harris, here. Thank you, Hutchinson.
Here.
Blake Rogers, here. Brandy Cherry.
Here.
All right, all present, would you have a coral present? So we will officially call our meeting to order. And our first item is we do want to welcome this Brandy Cherry to board her first meeting, representing District Number One, so welcome. And we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you.
All right, all right, good deal. Let's get into our official agenda. The first item tonight is a recommendation needed to accept the board agenda.
I make a motion to accept the agenda.
Accept.
Our motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion about the agenda? Not all those in favor of approving it, say aye. Any opposeds? All right, the agenda is set. The next thing is the consent agenda and the recommendation to approve it.
I make a motion to approve the consent.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. There is no discussion on that. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposeds? It is approved. Uh, next, we have delegations. I don't believe there are any delegations here tonight to address the board. So we'll move forward with our spotlight and celebration, and of course, that will be from the place we're located, by Westchester Elementary School. So, Ms. Amy, let's celebrate.
Yes. I'm gonna start again with something we use for morning announcements. We started this project several, uh, two or three years ago with just our Richmond students, but now all of our students in our school get to participate in morning announcements, whether it be with the pledge, or they can tell a lunch menu, or, um, just whatever. So I'm gonna share just a piece of that. Last year, in our morning announcements, we focused on the seven habits. And this year, we're focusing more on our community, and we started with the family, like the show pictures of the families, and then it grows to, um, the school family, the community at large, and then eventually, we're trying to teach kids the difference between a state and a countryana. Because you know, what state you live in, they'll say, America. You know, we're just trying to build community that way, too. So we're using our morning announcements to do that. So I'm gonna show a piece of that for you.
Hi, everyone. I am Carly Angel Davis for this second grade class. We have two birthdays today. Happy birthday to Withering Glass and Maggie Quarles. For lunch, we are having fish sticks, hush pumpkins, white beans, coleslaw, mac and cheese, and fruit. Who decides? Our parents and grandparents are the people in our community that get us, us to school and back safely. Our school bus drivers. Driving a school bus is a big job, and only responsible people can do that job. Our school district hires responsible people who will drive carefully and keep you safe. Have you ever had to wait for your bus? That is because there are not always enough of bus drivers to drive the buses. So our bus drivers are helping out by driving two rounds instead of one round. If you ride the bus, you can help your bus driver by sitting down and being quiet. That's why they can focus on their own. Here is Miss Karen. If you ride her bus, make sure to tell her thank you. If you ride a different bus, make sure to tell your bus driver thank you as well. We will pause for a moment of silence. Say we pledge allegiance, let's sing your grand old flag. Have a great Monday, everyone. Bye.
So you see, we use that to build, and then, um, that same week, we, um, we had to do a little, I forget it to kind of here. So again, we're just trying to have our kids exposed to, um, a community at large. So that's, that's kind of been our focus this year, and we're working on that. And then, uh, beyond that, we have a new, um, mission statement, or a new motto, I'd say, one team, one vision, one goal. And, uh, we talked to our staff very early on in the school year, what does that mean to you? Obviously, one team means we're all working together to get somewhere. Our vision this year, we decided we, uh, would phrase it this way. We're trying to build a culture at Westchester that students can be independent, learn independent, and be readers and thinkers. And that's our overarching goal, and our, our overarching vision and our overarching goal would be, we're trying to grow every kid at least one academic school year. So that's, that's where we all focus on. This is what we say all the time right now around, uh, Westchester, one team, one vision, one goal. So, uh, with that, we're trying to do monthly celebrations. And, uh, so in August, we did Jersey Day to celebrate our new theme, one team, one vision, one goal. So we all dressed in, um, jerseys, which was fun. That same day, we also had a free home and baseball team that was here with us that day. So they came in and read books and did things, um, with our students. They actually thought those young men were all celebrities. They asked for their autographs. They did all kinds of things. It was really fun. And, and those boys have come back a couple other times as well. We're gonna try to do some lunch buddies and that kind of thing. Since Ms. Coltrask, um, her husband is now the baseball coach at Freddie's, so I've kind of got an in on that. So it's pretty awesome. Sarah? I know, I wanna go.
Kelly probably fixed it, so her picture was like.
She probably did. I want you to see the rest of this. I'm bragging on this smart board over here. Okay, you just stand here and swipe. All right, keep going. So, so this is Jersey Day, all right? Also, so in September, we decided to go along with our challenge for readers. We had a forty book challenge for the month of September, for, uh, challenge every student to read forty books in that month. Uh, we kept up with that, and, um, so at the end of the month, they had camp freedom light. So they earned little finger flashlights, and the, uh, teachers decorated the classrooms and things to look like a little campground. So we did that at the end of September. That was a lot of fun. Um, so we all dreamt of dressing up camping gear, and again, we had baseball players here that came and enjoyed, um, that with us. Pretty fun. There we go. More pictures of that. It's just good to see books in kids' hands, period. Then the baseball team came back and painted our playground for us, which it looks so much better. And another thing we've, uh, done this year, we have something called brag tags. Is there's these little collectible brag tags that students keep on their backpacks. They love them. They get them for attendance. They give them for their case, uh, scores. They get them for the reading challenges. Um, if they get sent to my office for something, great, they get them. Teachers just hand them out for just whatever. So they're loving, uh, collecting those, those brag tags, and so every month, we have something different for those as well. They love the brag tags. PTO bought those for us, and I appreciate it. So here we are, first time passing out the brag tags, uh, for the attendance and for the forty book challenge. That's why they're doing the forty right there. All right, uh, PTO and Parental Involvement helps us do a lot of things here at Westchester. Um, so for October, uh, we didn't do any field trips or anything, so we brought the pumpkin patch to our kids. So, uh, what, a funny story is, we don't let the students play in what we call the meadow anymore for safety reasons. And so there's a first grader, when we had this day, she told her mom, she said, "I know now why they don't let us play in the meadow anymore." And she said, "Why not? They planted pumpkins." So they went out there and picked their pumpkins, and they got to paint them and decorate, uh, their pumpkins. And then that was our Parental Involvement Night, which they, we did a, a, a book, and parents got to make a carrot with them that's built in boards still out here. And, um, we also had a big challenge, and, um, because our kids did super well, I got duct taped, uh, to the wall, and Ms. Myra did as well. And then along with that, we did the food can drive for Eagles Edge, which was part of that, that whole deal. So that was pretty fun until I slid down, and that wasn't funny anymore. And I wanted to talk a bit about some things we've done in after-school. After-school's been pretty, pretty fun, too. I've got some really dedicated teachers that, um, have been working with that. We do book clubs in after-school, and then they do STEM-type projects in after-school. And I want to specifically talk about this. You may have seen this on WBJ. Uh, we, they did a whole story about this. We partnered with the animal shelter, and they gave us real pictures of real dogs that were waiting to be adopted. So our kids wrote, uh, letters to potential, um, adopters, adoptees, or whatever. And so they did it from their perspective about why they should be adopted. And then those, these letters got taken with them to Tractor Supply for Adoption Day, and the dogs got adopted. So this was a whole big project we did with the animal shelter, which was awesome. Um, the kids, they did a fantastic job with that, and it was on WBJ. And then, uh, in October also, we did a pumpkin contest, and that was again to, to encourage reading. They had to create the pumpkins, and it had to go along with a book. This is how I learned about the book Dragons Love Tacos. I didn't know that was a book until a couple years ago when I saw the pumpkin. And, um, so this encourages kids to read as well. We had that, um, in October. And then November, just finished this yesterday, we had a book talent, a book exchange, where students could bring books from home that they've already read, or they're about grown, or whatever. And they brought them in, and they got to exchange them for some more books to take home. So we did that this week. So again, we're just trying to encourage reading and, and, uh, keep kids going with that and encourage them to think and do. I think that's the end of it. Any questions for me?
Comments, questions?
Thank you, Ms. Amy.
You're welcome.
Good stuff. Thanks for the swipes.
Yes.
Uh, next to that, our agenda, we have a recommendation to look at for the board to approve the district-level, uh, textbook adoption committee. Uh, this has been included in our packet, and it's something that's really put a little more emphasis on this year. Uh, Mr. Kildare talked about it over the.
Right, and, and again, board members, uh, this is something that is part of your duties. It's not something new that is a new acquired duty that you have. This has always been part of the responsibilities of the board. But in the past, we have been more, uh, focused on, you know, uh, just keeping it at a grassroots level. We have such an emphasis now on what our kids are learning, and the emphasis has been, as you've seen, general, the general legislators take action with, you know, what books we allow for kids to read, what, uh, textbooks we use, you know? If it's got the word common core, that is a sin to the nth degree now. So, you know, it's a lot of emphasis. We do, uh, invest our resources into books that will engage our kids in high levels of learning. And to get down the road, uh, we have a, and this next adoption is for math books adoption. Hence, the group that we have, um, included in your list, representing, uh, this math book adoption committee, uh, includes for K-three schools, Haley Cloud, Nancy Davidson, Kim Murphy. For fourth and the fifth grade, be Melanie Shelton and Amy Wood. For sixth through the eighth, be Kristy Pennington and Amanda Robertson. And then nine through twelve, April Schulte and Mike Showers. These have already voiced their willingness to serve on this committee. All of these have either teaching right now in math or have experience, so they're coming at it from their expertise to make sure that what we choose for our math adoption, which will be for next year, will be what we need. And we're looking for consensus, making sure that what we're starting in lower grades up to like fifth is consistent across the board, and then like sixth through high school, so that we're having a consistent, like, book company that we're using. The effort is to make sure that the vocabulary that the lower grades are learning continues through fifth, and then starting over in sixth through twelve. We've noticed through the last several years that the hardest transition for us is right now in math, is moving from eighth grade to high school. So we want to make sure that there is at least through that sixth through twelfth grade, or, or EOC grades, is there's a consistency across where their learning, their vocabulary is consistent. So, this, this is my recommendation. These were hands-handed by our own math supervisor, Ms. Melanie Peeler. Of course, her past experience, she was the Southwest Corps, uh, for the State Department, part of that force specifically as a math consultant. So her expertise is, is quite extensive. Her experience is very successful in the past and present. And it's based on her recommendation, and I support her suggestion.
So we would need a motion to approve this recommendation of the list of teachers that, uh, Mr. Kildare mentioned, and it's been provided in your packet.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, motion's been made, and seconded, is there any discussion about this adoption or these mentioned? Not all those in favor, say aye. Any opposeds? All right, they are approved. Uh, we also have another recommendation to the board tonight. This is to accept a TIPS USA purchasing agreement, which were part of several purchasing cooperatives, and this would be an additional one. Uh, Mr. Kildare refer to that as well.
Well, and, and shortly to it, just like, uh, Shane has mentioned, we are part of other cooperatives. The benefit of this is that for the services or the equipment that we're looking to invest in, we don't have to go through the traditional bidding process for those that have that, you know, that, well, that bottom dollar that is that, to the point where we have to have a bid, uh, proposal. And in comparison, all of these in this TIPS USA group have already been vetted against the best, where they, they've had to submit contracts for state bids. So I've had somebody talk about a specific vendor that had a standalone bid, uh, or standalone quote that was significantly higher than the same company when it had to go through this TIPS USA. So definitely, when we have either equipment or services that we need to purchase, we go through our purchasing cooperative to see which one can give us the best price. So this is just another one to fold in. It was entertained to the county commission last Monday night, and they approved it also pending your approval.
Their recommendation to, to, uh, approve this new purchasing agreement?
I make a motion to approve.
One second.
All right, motion's been made, and seconded, is there any, uh, discussion or questions about it?
It, uh, the new, uh, before that, that bid's amount is twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five. So this would be a, uh? But this wouldn't require that. Okay. This, if, if there was some service or equipment that we need or find a need for purchase, we can go through this TIPS. And, and, uh, we, we need to. We've done this with Byboard. That's another one that, one of the earlier ones that we had purchased with, or partnered with.
Any other questions? All right, if there are no additional questions, do we have a recommendation to approve, disagree? Oh, we, we've had already, sorry. The question turned me off. So, uh, uh, basically, just a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposeds? All right, it is approved. Thank you very much. All right, lastly, tonight, we just kind of have a moment to touch on any, uh, updates, uh, also, uh, any questions we may have about projects going on within the school system that may have questions about, or, yeah.
Well, and if I could speak, yeah, if I could speak just briefly about the vision, you know, each month, I've been providing you, uh, as board members, uh, a, a focus on where we've been, what the work that we've been doing this year, not just since the last board meeting. We have been partnering with the National Institute of Excellence in Teaching for the last several years. They partnered with us the year that everything went COVID, and their services provide us with really robust training for our, uh, instructional leaders, for our principals. And now we're going to extend that down into some of our teacher leaders, too. We have been training our principals to be better aware of what it means to move from a students, or a teacher-centered classroom setting, where they are just standing up and delivering the instruction, to be more purposeful to see what the students are learning in the process. What are the students actually doing? And moving from student engagement to the progression to student ownership in the learning. Now, we've been talking with NIUT, and the most recent training we've gone, gone through with them is with success criteria. The importance of teachers in their planning and presentation of not only teaching the content as the curriculum standards dictate, and making sure that our students are doing, are being able to perform the tasks necessary, like for math and the instructional focus, but making sure that our students understand these are the criteria it takes for you to have evidence that you have mastered this. You know, again, if the students don't see it, if you don't have a clear distinction of what good work looks like, it's very hard to find. And sometimes frustrations build on that lack of focus, and students seem to kind of walk around and lose motivation. So, you know, what we're hoping is that we have more clarity. We wouldn't go to a football game if there was no clear goal line. There was no success, where are you gonna score? So, you know, in my own coaching experience, that's how it ties in with the instructional practice. And for this, we, uh, again, these are, are experts across our nation that are right now based out of Nashville. And, uh, but the lady that we worked with most recently, uh, is, um, out of South Carolina. And that's, um, again, giving us perspective. It's, we're teaching our, our, our school leaders, but then it's gonna move to our teacher leaders soon. And, um, I just see it as a po- positive benefit for all of our kids. Every student deserves the best quality of learning. But it's all associated with what the students are doing, not so much of how the teachers only present. And, and as I included in the last paragraph, State Report Card, we've had some information about State Report Card for a while. Uh, we've known about our data. Uh, it's going out to the general public on the twenty-second of this month. At the next meeting, we'll have a more, uh, definite time to talk about that, what the things that we are celebrating, what are things that we need to focus our attention on to improve. So that's gonna come up next month, uh, the December meeting.
Any, uh, members have a question about any of the capital projects, or any other?
Jack's Creek coming along?
They were working out there today. They've got, had to report their footers. I don't know if the cold weather has slowed it down, but they're supposed to be done with that tomorrow. Then they'll turn, I guess, hooking it up over to the construction, other construction down there. And at some point next week, the underpinning and, uh, ramp cords and things will show up, and they'll put those down. Then they'll fix them on the back and hopefully get it done.
Doing the, doing the steps and?
Yeah, they'll have to do a ramp, a s- ramp on the front, and then off the back part, steps, and then they'll have to determine whether to sidewalk or whatever.
Is there, is there, is it made a timeframe that you, if you can? We, we haven't had a definite stop date yet. That, that is something the capital projects I'd like to invest in. You know, incentivize if you get done early. De-incentivize if you get done late, you know? I don't know what groups are willing to go into those, because, you know, the, you're still dealing with the supply chain issues, and then in some cases, like in ours.
We sound up continually to liquidate damages. We don't deliver our project on time. We don't pay them.
Good deal.
So absolutely.
Good.
It makes people.
If they're willing to, to do the job, then they're gonna hold themselves responsible.
And they should, yes, sir. I agree with that.
Well, it depends on the first and last option, some of the weather and others.
We're not gonna be loose to use it.
I mean, the, the con- the contractor.
It all depends on the superintendent before and running the project.
The man, the man who's on the job is out.
This job has two entities, though. The modular company does not hook it up or anything like that, so you have to have a, a separate company. But this one drug their feet, so the other one's just been sitting waiting. But it's, it's costing them money. This is gonna cost them money. So, if you have, it would be more advantageous to have something in there to push them a little faster. But in this one, in, in this bid, we only had two bids, one backed down, so you had, you could either, they could take it or leave it, or you could do nothing. In some instances, we're finding that, oh, very few, there's very few people out to be there.
Well, if you notice that senior property's had the tree clearing and was burning off the brush, that'll be, that'll be resolved quick enough, but, you know, that's taking the next step in that project.
Any other questions? There are none. If anything else, let's just come forward. All right, if none, I will share that the next meeting will be Thursday, December fifteenth. The, uh, meeting site will be the Chester County Junior High School. And we do need to announce at this meeting that the board will consider, at our December meeting, a new contract for the superintendent of schools. So that will be, uh, in the packet for next month, something that we'll consider at that time. With that being said, at the end of our agendas, this meeting is adjourned.